The meeting is called to order, Southampton Town Planning Board, Thursday, August 9, 2018. The Secretary will call the roll.
Chairman, Infinity.
Present.
Vice Chair Blaney is absent. Secretary is here. Board Member LaFaro is absent. Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Zuccarelle.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
We have a quorum, sir.
Could you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and two republics of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the event of an emergency, exit this room utilizing either the two rear doors or proceed to the main floor using either staircase. Exit this building using the front or the side rear door. There are two applications. I will note, we will be opening the Argo application and we will be able to take testimony, upon which time, the meeting at the request of the applicant has been adjourned to October 25th. So if you know other speakers or wishes and traditional testimony, that will be the opportunity also. The first application is Roscoe. Are you ready to read, sir?
I am ready.
Mr. Chairman, I actually don't have an affidavit of posting on it.
Do not have an affidavit. Is anyone here for Roscoe? Well, we cannot open Roscoe.
We can't.
Table it.
I'm not going to read.
How about Argo?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have both affidavits of posting and mailing for Argo.
Okay, we're going to read the application. Go right to the record.
And you're going to give me this one. It's 10 times worse.
That was quick.
We like to move it right along. Notice a public hearing. Please take notice that in accordance with the town code of the town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, August 9, 2018, at 6:00 AM at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York. To consider site plan special exception application entitled Argo Corporation, including but not limited to the review of certain covenants and restrictions contained in the grant of agricultural easement burdening the property. The application is for the construction of a 7,220-square-foot residence and accessory structures on a residential building envelope within a 3.749-acre agricultural reserve known as Agricultural Area B, established by the map of Butter Lane Estates within the CRA zoning district, aquifer protection overlay district, and the agricultural overlay district, New York State archaeologically sensitive area, located east of Butter Lane and south of Pheasant Drive, Suffolk County tax map number 90051-1-2, 2.23 and 2.24. By order of the Planning Board of the town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Very good. As previously stated, there will be no presentation by the applicant. We will open the floor up to public comment at this time and then adjourned to October 25th. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on the matter of Argo? Sir?
Lieutenant.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Edward Gersowitz. I just got notified by certified mail here. I received that a couple of days ago and I guess, I don't know why I was notified with respect to this particular application. I mean, I guess I do know just because I'm listed here. I'm in Lot 3 of a flag lot which borders the northern part of the larger parcel. So I'm sort of just coming into this. I wanted to show up this evening just so that I could introduce myself and to really, you know, find out what's happening. I did make some preliminary inquiry with some of these speakers and I did have the opportunity and benefit this morning, as a matter of fact, of reviewing the video that was held of the prior hearing. So I just wanted to take this opportunity. I know there's not going to be any testimony, anything, any presentation tonight and I certainly am not prepared to proceed on that in any event. I have to figure out what, if any, interest I have in this entire proceeding. Obviously, I am concerned as a resident of Bridgehampton now for 13 years and I wanted to come down and, you know, find out a little bit more information. So I'll try and be here in October and I'll try and do a little bit of due diligence about what's going on with the whole thing and I just wanted to say good evening and I just was curious why I didn't have notice of this earlier when they had the prior hearings and this time my name made it. Who knows? Whatever, but I'm here and now I'm leaving. So go on. Yes, sir.
Could you print your name on the sign-in sheet?
It's the most important part and I did not do that. I will do that. Thank you. Will this be for a mailing address with the printer address or will it be for Bridgehampton?
I think your actual physical residency. The mailing is done through the tax record.
Gotcha, right. Makes sense. Okay. Oh, Argo, I guess.
Right? Is that right?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Yes?
I'm Pamela Harwood. I'm the Chair of the Bridgehampton Improvement Society Citizens Advisory Committee and I will sign in, but I'm here today even though the applicants aren't speaking. I was wondering, very surprised to learn that it went from, I can't remember, March 8th to now and nothing gets heard of in between, but I was told that what prompted today's public hearing was that the applicant had gathered some additional information about other agricultural reserves and perhaps other precedents that were set. I know we've talked about at least one before, which is 545 Halsey, the Lutnick property. I don't know what other ag reserves that there have been favorable decisions on in the past, but I would imagine that that's what this applicant is trying to gather, is how many times the town board has allowed things in the past, set precedents that may work in their favor. And of course, for me, those are precedents and decisions that don't work in the community's favor necessarily. I'm starting out, I got a little lawyerly here, with my opposition points and I'll be able to leave one of these for each of you before I go. The original covenant limits structures on Lot 2, but I guess it's B that you're using, to a house, garage, agricultural-related structures. Argo's application asking for permission to build structures described as a swimming pool, tennis court, and a pavilion are not agricultural use. So even in the announcement of the public hearing when it said, we're talking about a house, a garage, and additional accessory structures, it makes it sound even to contiguous neighbors. For instance, Ed might not have known that we're talking about a swimming pool and tennis courts. He might have thought they were talking about agricultural-related buildings. So I think it would be a nice thing if these announcements were more specific for the benefit of the public, to know just how egregious we think that these requests are. Whereas the agricultural reserves use can include recreation, and there's the sticking point, I believe, that in the original covenant, this is a very, just saying the word recreation is loosey-goosey. It doesn't say specifically. I would wish it had said something like recreational use to be determined by the town board at a later date what that is. And that would have given you the ability to choose in each application, but it doesn't. And I think that's the sticking point, that the applicant wishes to consider a swimming pool and a tennis court and a pavilion, recreational use that's compatible with an agricultural reserve, and the community does not think this is true. We submit that this was not the intention or spirit of the original covenant when recreation was allowed. We interpret recreational use as meant to be recreational for the community and I think perhaps that was the original intention, that maybe an agricultural reserve could be used for hiking, picnics, or something that's not permanent, not a permanent thing. A swimming pool is a permanent structure. You can't cover it up and decide you're going to build, you know, plant crops. A tennis court is permanent. It's sort of like paving as opposed to just a dirt road or gravel path. It's permanent. And that's the objection here. You can't have a permanent structure and still be allowing agriculture. Of course, any farmer or workforce. I see the house and the garage as workforce housing. Everybody knows that we're very short on workforce housing and in other places like Two Trees Farm, they have two workforce housing structures which were approved and we were all in favor of that. But this is really not meant, this is not shaping up to be workforce housing. Whereas the town has denied such recreational use buildings on previous applications, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say denied, approved, and that set a precedent. And I think that's something that the lawyers for this application are working on providing. What other similar situations have you approved? The question is, I don't know whether you're going to speak to that or not, the question is whether or not, in the case of the Lutnick property, 545 Halsey, my understanding is that, there was so much press on it, my understanding is that the applicant lost in court, you know, and then came back and sued again. It went to an appeals court. The applicant lost again. The town won. The town's decision was favorable from the courts and the owner just kept coming back and re-suing the town and one of the first things that Jay Schneiderman did was settle because the town couldn't afford to keep defending itself against someone with such deep pockets. The question is, is that the town approving an application or is that just the town saying, we don't have any more money to keep defending ourselves? I don't know the answer. I don't know if you have the answer to that. Can that be construed as a precedent whereby the town planning board approved something it shouldn't have approved? And in that case, how long are we going to be held hostage to corporations with big money? I mean, if it's at the point where the planning board is afraid to deny an application because you're afraid of which person or corporation will sue you.
We're not afraid.
We're not afraid.
Not afraid at all.
You're afraid you missed the afternoon.
That will not.
No, we're not afraid.
Many that they've been.
That will not happen with this board.
Recently sued for $20 million and $150,000 personally about three years ago.
No, we're not afraid.
We're not afraid.
That's not how we make decisions. Okay, well, I could tell you that makes me feel a lot better because I wondered about it because when Jay Schneiderman settled the 545 Halsey, it did look like that and I think that that was actually a quote from him in a newspaper article, we just can't keep spending the money, the legal fees. I think that's two different issues. I think there's a difference between legal fees and.
You can go to the town board at a public meeting and tell them that.
Yeah. I see. Not that I understood how the town board had the ability to do that because I thought this is a planning board decision. No, that was a decision probably made for a court decision, whether to settle or not, but I can assure you that this planning board makes decisions based on zoning laws and what's correct.
And the facts and circumstances of the Argo application as it is presented before this board.
Okay. I think that will make a lot of people feel much better and I'm glad you clarified that for me. And I will go back and let everybody know that because, to go on and I may be repeating myself, we submit that the town and planning board is not necessarily limited by such previous decisions and have the ability to judge and decide on the merits or demerits of each application that comes before them. So I think that's what you just said.
That's what we said. You think they're aware of that.
Mm-hmm. And for instance, I already mentioned, are these structures permanent? They are. Are these structures necessary for the housing of farmland workforce? No, they are not. Will an affirmative decision on this application set yet other precedents for current and future planning boards? It might, but you're assuring me that it doesn't work that way. Will the planning board make a decision that is based on the fear that the large and deep-pocketed developers making this application will sue the town? You've assured me that that's not how your thinking goes. Would an affirmative decision hurt the community? I think it would, by taking away additional land that was supposed to be saved for agriculture and recreational use of the public. And that is another thing I see about recreational use on ag reserves. I believe it was meant, my interpretation, it's meant to be for the recreation of the public, not for the recreation of an owner, but it is ambiguous. I don't know how the later, more refined covenants look. I'd be interested to get a hold of one of them because I'm told this is one of the earliest ones and the covenants are getting tighter and tighter. I'm told that. Argo currently enjoys severely reduced taxes. I think I said that the first time I spoke on ag reserve Lot A, but would be made to give that up on Lot, so if Lot B was developed, they give up their favorable tax status on Lot B once they build a house and once they build a garage? In other words, I believe that ag reserves, the owners of ag reserves pay about one-tenth of the property taxes as a residential lot. And that is one of the reasons so many well-heeled developers make them ag reserves. They have a permanent, unheeded view, whatever. They get a view forever. They know that no one's going to build a house on it and their taxes are vastly reduced because agricultural land, it does not pay the same taxes. And I understand that once Lot B is developed with a house and a garage, then they would be paying residential taxes. And I'm wondering, is there any way that if this should ever grow through, for whatever reason, that they could be made to come up to residential tax standards on Lot A? Because I don't know how this is going to go. But I think this should be very much a part of your deliberations. I think that it would be of all of us to find out what taxes they are paying on the agricultural Lot A that they own, which is really, it's all of this. This lot that they want to build on is just this. Their Lot A is all this and I think they pay a pittance. I looked it up on the GIS system. I think it's something like $2,500 a year. Okay? We pay more than that on my half acre. So this is wrong. It's absolutely wrong. I don't know if that can be changed, but I'd like to know, I'd like to find out if that can be changed. It's just egregious. And that's all I have to say today. I thank you for listening and we'll definitely be back on October 25th. I'll put my name here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Hello.
Hi. Full disclosure, my name is Peter Fader and I'm married to Pam Harwood for 30 years and she told me I should speak tonight, so I thought I'd take this rare opportunity to speak.
To get a word in?
Yes, to get a word in, right. Just kind of a 10,000-foot view of this whole thing. We seem to be giving tax breaks in this town to encourage certain types of behavior and I just want to point out that if someone's getting a tax break, that means the rest of us are kicking in for that. You know, we're kicking in for, you know, these unimpinged views and everything and then somebody goes and builds and plants, you know, 50 trees so we don't have the view anymore. So they're getting the tax benefit and we're not getting the view, so, you know, how is that helping? You know, these ag reserves, these specified areas that are set aside with specific tax breaks to encourage certain types of behavior, I'm not really sure that it's being that effective. I mean, you see what's going on with the Lutnick property, you see what's going on with this property that we're talking about today. There are other ample situations, Madonna's property, Matt Lauer's property, where, you know, they've got very smart lawyers and they like to consider themselves to be very astute and, oh, look how clever I am, you know, but at the end of the day, you know, we are going to be forced, we're going to be the ones kicking in, you know, the extra money. That money has to come from somewhere and it's coming from us. It's coming from the average citizen who doesn't have the access to, you know, high-powered lawyers and deep pockets that can come in here and intimidate people and beat them into submission. And I think that that's the thing that really concerns me the most, is that, you know, we are not getting this, these things are very well-intended and we're well-intended to keep open space and maintain the integrity of the area, but is that really happening? Is that really happening and is it worth the extra money that all of us, all of our tax bills reflect that at some point? We have to make up that money somewhere and it's going to come from the rest of us. So I would just hope that everyone here is mindful of the fact that, you know, it's our money. You know, we are paying for these people, we are subsidizing these people's lifestyles and I don't think it's right.
I think a point here is that, Dennis, you know, about 15, 20 years ago, there was a concerted effort to stop large farms to be sold to developers.
Right.
To put houses on.
Right.
Now, with your theory then, you also lost all the taxes on those houses. So you actually lost more money than, and they agreed to pay to the farmer, the agricultural person, what his property would be worth as a developed piece of property. And he still maintained owning it as a farm. And that was done, that's under state law, correct, Dennis?
Yes.
Yeah. And we had to follow state law and one of them, Lauer and several others, they have a right to a horse farm and it can be private. So the point was, the people of Southampton wanted to maintain population and vista and that's why it happened. Now, how did the laws interpret it? That really is up to us and then the lawyers.
Well, it just seems like there's a lot of leeway in the way the laws were written originally so that, you know, we've had these situations now, you know, I don't know what's being done to rectify it for the future, but it seems like, you know, you've got a handful of these things that are going on now that just, you know, I'm concerned.
Yeah.
You know, I'm concerned.
I'd like to.
Yes, you can come up and speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just state your name again.
Pamela Harwood. I understand how these initiatives were and why they were originally set up and I think it is very beneficial to the community and I don't think most people would mind the lower losing. I don't think people minded losing that tax revenue. Most people would like to have open space, agricultural land, and lose the tax revenue. So I think people went into that with open eyes. What is happening now, because lawyers will always find ways to go in and out, is that we ended up with losing the tax revenue and losing what we thought we were getting, whether it be open space because people put hedges around their properties and then say it's a tree farm and nobody can do anything about that because they can't prove it. I don't know if anybody's ever found out whether Madonna has sold a tree because the, I remember reading that, well, the definition of a tree farm is, it's not just about growing trees. If you're a tree farm and a business, you're going to have to eventually sell a tree to be designated as a business. Whether anyone's followed up on this and found out whether a tree has ever been sold would be interesting and the same with Mount Lauer. Has anything ever been sold to make this a viable agricultural business? But so we've ended up in public with nothing. We've not gotten our open space because there are big trees blocking the view. We've not gotten the agriculture because people get around these covenants and say, well, I'm allowed to have a swimming pool and a tennis court and a pavilion. And so, and what the neighbors lose is the view from a seven, I know near my home, they're building 7,000-square-foot houses on half an acre each and they're huge. They're humongous. And so what are we getting? And I think that the early covenants, people were willing to lose the tax money, but we're not willing to lose tax money and not get what we were supposed to get. That's the idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just make a follow-up comment if I can.
Sure, just state your name again for the.
Sure, I'll do that. Ed Gersowitz, again, the owner of the northern end and I guess what I'm trying, the only point that I want to make is that I guess if it can happen here, it can happen anywhere and for my reasons, obviously, if it were to happen up here, then it's just going to destroy the whole character also, I think. I don't know if it will, I don't know if it won't. Again, some really interesting issues are raised just with regard to the definition of precedent and how much we expand the scope, if you will, of any such variances and exceptions to, does the exception swallow the rule? I always wanted to use that one. Basically, does the exception swallow the rule and does basically do away with what the purpose of a variance and not giving a variance is really about? It's also some interesting issues with regard to some of the other terms that I want to do a little bit of research. I happen to be an attorney and don't represent, not really representing myself as an attorney though, which I would not want to do, but some interesting issues also. So I just want to clarify also that I would be able to, as we go towards the October date, perhaps make a submission or two if I feel it's on point for purposes of your evaluation and in your analysis with respect to some of the issues that have been raised. So as we go along, I may do that because there's an issue already, I think, that I want to do a little bit of research on. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Easeman, just to give you a little background.
Sure.
These were one of the earliest agricultural easements in the town and when they were set up in the late '70s, early '80s, no one could envision what is taking place today with the 7,000-square-foot houses. And back then, it was farming families who were carving up a few lots and then it was deemed reasonable that an area, certain corner of the reserve should be set aside for the.
Farmhouse, right.
For the farmhouse. And that was the case with Lutnick and Mr. Walsh has submitted a number of other cases of this type. And fast forward 30 years and the farmhouse is what you see before you with the accessory structures and their lawyers, it's hard to say with the intent of those 1980 easements, none of us were in this capacity. We were around, but not in this capacity.
Right, no, no way.
So it was a simpler time, but the attorneys, as you being in law, know that they, those easements grant the landowner certain rights and they're, they're going to advocate for those rights.
No, I understand that, but I think if this, if I'm not mistaken, just from what I was able to review, that the stated purpose here was not for farming. I don't believe on the part of the Gordons, maybe I'm wrong on that, I don't know. Again, I'll do a little bit more of.
Well, actually, the Gordon, which was now the Lutnick, but the Gordon, the first iteration of that plan, this plan actually designated an area where the farmhouse could be. The Lutnick property, their first iteration had no carve-out of where the structure should be. So the first map, and I was here when it was first presented, it got bounced on this board, the 22,000-square-foot farmhouse was right in the middle of the farm field and then the tennis court was in one corner and the swimming pool and the pavilion and the eight-car garage were all scattered along across the field. So through the process, then it got sent back to the town board and through the process of negotiation and litigation, no, negotiated, there was a set aside. And then following that, there was litigation from the neighbors.
From the neighbors.
Who wanted it on the other side.
Pushed on the other side, right.
So, but at least this reserve has a designated area, so to put your mind at ease, we, no one could build structures up by your property.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your attendance. Any additional speak?
If I could add, several of the new ag reserves that have been recently adopted have a lot more restrictions. It has to be crops, it has to be food, so, you know, we've learned as, over the years, that what we want to have happen needs to be, was.
we've learned as, over the years, that what we want to have happen needs to be, was specifically laid out.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Well, then, do you divine, do you divine what the, just as a matter of philosophical discussion, perhaps, maybe not, but do you divine what the purpose of the initial granting of the easement was 30 years ago, when the terms were maybe not structured or, or fit so definitely? Do you follow what I'm saying? Because maybe I'm making myself very unclear.
Look at the easement initially, and there's four categories, I think, of uses. You could look at that in the first instance and then follow up with that question if it's still unanswered. For example, open and fallow is allowed.
Right.
Everybody seems to forget that. So they could do nothing with it and let it just grow.
Right, right.
Yep. So take a look at the easement, at all of that downstairs.
Okay. I'll take a look. Again, I'm in, I'm Eddie Comeley, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
A couple of other little points, since we're all educating each other tonight. We don't and can't get involved in tax issues.
I'm not, I don't bring that up.
But, you know, it's come up, so I'm just saying, you know, whether somebody gets taxed at one rate and another, and, you know, that, that's all determined before something even comes to us. And the other thing I will say to you is that if you come to some of these meetings, and, for God's sake, why would you?
That's off the record. That's off the record.
Though you're on TV.
I know. But, I mean, if you were to come to some of these meetings like we do, because we, we want to be here, and we get paid to be here, and we, you'll see over time that we spend a lot of toil and sweat fighting a lot of these issues about view sheds and preserving the views on a particular property, making sure people are complying with whatever it is we can put in front of them in terms of good planning and the codes. We're restricted, obviously, by town code and state requirements.
Right.
But I'm telling you, if I pat myself on the back too hard, I'll break my arm, but-
And when we find out, we finally have an agreement, right? We find out a month later, someone's in court against it already.
You know, we do the best we can, and we try very hard to look at each application and consider everything you guys are talking about.
I don't doubt that for a second. I watched the video for two hours this morning, when it was two hours last time when you were here. I certainly understand that. I commend you, and it's really an inspiration as a resident of Bridgehampton, which I love and I'm sure we all love, in the town of Southampton, and that's why you do this also on an August night here at 6:30.
Well, we'll see you in October.
We'll see you in October.
October. Come dressed in costume. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Great donuts.
Any additional speakers?
We've been here since two.
I'm Carrie Millard, and I live in Bridgehampton. And I'm on the CAC. I used to be the co-chair of it. I came here in 1945 with my mother and my brother on a train. And we stayed in the Sheppenkowski Farm on Sag Main Street for four summers as boarders. And I love, obviously, like we all do, I love the look of the farmland. And I know your job is terribly difficult. And all I want to say is that I believe firmly that I love the swaths of farmland that are left. And I hope that when you're considering things, you'll remember that's what I said.
Yeah, we do, too.
Because it's terribly important. It took me almost an hour to get to this meeting tonight. The traffic is absolutely unbelievable. And it took all my sneaky back routes I used to ride my bike on when I was a kid. It is just, you know, this place is getting paralyzed, and the great joy of it was the natural beauty. And if there's any way that you all can save some of that, I'm most, most appreciative.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, you're printing your name. I'll also state, many people aren't aware that attempts to place, when the town attempts to place limitations on a farmland activity, the landowner typically goes to the state of New York, where they have a very powerful commission called the Ag and Markets Board.
Right.
Who gives agricultural landowners broad latitude to do what they want, including 15,000, 20,000-square-foot metal buildings, fences, a whole host of activities that the town has frowned upon. We are constantly in court with this commission, and we don't do well.
I know. And I read about all the things that happen, so.
Yeah. There's a very powerful agricultural lobby that initiates regulations that may be appropriate for upstate and the more rural areas.
But not for here.
But certainly aren't appropriate for our area.
No, I know. It's, it's a very, very difficult position to be in, so.
Well, thank you for your time. It's important to remain engaged.
Thank you.
So we'll adjourn then till-
I just wanted to give a statement.
Oh, yes, sure.
If you could, just give it to her, and she'll put it in.
Yeah, she'll give it to her.
She'll make copies.
Okay.
Give me. We'll pass it down.
John, I was like, there's another individual. Do you want to see if she wants to be heard?
Anyone ask her if she wants to be heard?
Did you have something you wanted to?
I actually don't really know what's going on.
Oh, okay.
I got a registered letter about our incorporation.
This is going to be, this matter is going to be adjourned till October 25th, where the applicant will be here to explain.
You can speak if you like.
Yeah, you can speak, but if you're unfamiliar with the application, it's not going to-
I mean, I believe the application is for a home of who-
You'd have to use the podium if you wish to speak.
Perhaps the podium.
Did you have other, are you passing those out?
Passing.
Chair and I would love to have, oh, thank you.
You just have to put your name in there.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's all right. Well, I'll get through this together, you know.
I'm so sorry. Do I have to tell anybody what the roads are like?
Oh, yeah.
No.
You just heard.
Damn.
Traffic commissions down the hall.
But there's no impact. That'll help. Okay. My name is Naomi Felber. I own a property that joins the reserve, and-
Can you point to that?
The map is right behind you.
Where I am?
To see if you can figure out where you are.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hang on.
It's okay. Take your time.
I'm going to be over here. I'm up here.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And this is where they want to be.
Yes. All right.
So I mean, I'm probably the least impacted by it.
No, your gentleman friend over here is.
That's your neighbor.
I'm the Gersewitz on the north side here, all the way at the top. That's me.
I met you.
This is where it's going to go, right?
We're starting drinks, good music, okay. Very, very briefly, I, hm, I really hate to say no to anybody. I worry only because of what's been going on in the 20 years or so since we bought our property, that it's kind of going crazy. And I worry that if we say yes to this, then it sets a precedent. There may be precedents that I don't know about, okay? But I think it would just be a pity. It's meant to be, you know, I went back and looked at, when I got your letter. I went back and I looked at the covenants when we bought, and it said the farmer could have a residence, and everything else is supposed to be an agricultural building, that it's meant to be an agricultural reserve. That's all.
As I said-
If you go on the website, this was filmed, and you'll get a lot of good information that these people got up and made. And it would really help you come to understand what the position is.
Okay.
Okay?
And it will be reheard on October 25th.
Put that down. Yeah, I'm out of town. Okay.
Well, it's televised, so you can phone.
Yeah, it's televised. You can see it.
And you can send written correspondence, emails.
On Southampton.
Okay. Thank you.
Straight through.
So do we have a motion to adjourn to October 25th? Motion by Robin, second by Zuccarelli, on favor. I oppose abstentions. Five yes. What do we do about Rosk? I guess there's, we're not going to reschedule, right?
Yeah.
No, not at this time.
What hap-
Are we good? We've motioned to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Robin, second by Phil. We are adjourned.